Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education Study Session for February 23, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Since tonight is a study session, there is only one opportunity for public comment, and that opportunity is right now. Would anyone like to share a public comment? At our last meeting, there was a presentation about doming on a field. So I would thank everyone who responded either in a Facebook comment, an email, or a phone call. We got a lot of positive feedback. So the Board has sort of decided to go forth and do some due diligence to check out some facts and be sure that it's all that it says it is. Assistant Superintendent Ellis will be the point person on that endeavor. So we will see where it goes. And I just want to reiterate that there will be no district funds that are used in this endeavor. It has to be self-sustaining by itself. So we're going ahead on that. We will be conducting a how-to-run-for-the-school-board session on Wednesday, March 16th at 7:00 at the District Library. For anybody that's interested in running for the Board, we have three open seats, two six-year terms, and one two-year term. So we'll kind of go through the process of what you need to do to run for the Board, what your commitment's like, time, compensation. We'll be up there 7:00, 8:00. And right now is what I like to call award season. Kids, staff, everyone's been working hard since the fall. So I see all kinds of, not grannies or other things, but I see all kinds of stuff out there. Last week, culinary medals, debate, science Olympiad, Quiz Bowl, choir band, just all kinds of stuff. And today, there was Ms. Yonkey and Ms. Hibbert up at the high school office got an award for the most use out of the transcript system in the state of Michigan.
What are you under units process?
So we're plowing through, collecting hardware and awards as usual in the spring. So if you see any of these people, please congratulate them. And we have two wrestlers going to stake, too. Good things happen. That's it for me. Any other Board members?
Just a quick announcement. Tomorrow is pizza fundraiser day for the Foundation for Slender Schools. They're partnering with Venito's downtown. So if you go between 10:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., 20% of all the sales will be donated to the Foundation for Slender Schools to support their strategic grant initiative for this year, which is to remember is the next generation classroom. So if you get hungry tomorrow night, look at the minute.
Kind of a motion to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries zero. Tonight, our study topic session will be what has been going on with the bond since we were approved by the voters last November. So we're going to do a bunch of bonds.
I'm going to turn it over fairly quickly to Leah Andrea and Mark Paulus, who are here from King Scott and from Clark Construction. What you're going to see with the presentation tonight, beyond the fact that it is 38 slides, is you're going to see really some details relative to the design, functionality of the facilities themselves. You'll get a sense of what's going on with each of the buildings. Remember that our focus right now is on, really, our key focus is on the summer of 2016. We've taken, and I cheer Liam logically because every meeting he starts with, we've taken eight months' worth of work, and we're doing it in three months. Because we're really doing a lot of the design, construction documents, the process of estimating, and even now getting those ready for bids, has really been compact. And so it's been a lot of conversation, a lot of discussion. I'd like to applaud both organizations for the work that they put in to try and pull this together. I will say Rex Clary and David Raft on our team have done a nice job of trying to pull these pieces together. Because we're using a really tight timeline, and because of the volume of the work that needs to be done, particularly this summer and next summer, it's imperative that there's a high level of communication going on on a frequent basis. And so I'm going to turn it over. Leah, I'll let you kind of leave the presentation. But again, it's an opportunity for us to get a, for the Board to get a first sense of where we're going. You'll see that we've done a lot of things that we told the community we're going to do in terms of making sure we're as efficient as possible. And so we've started to look at projects holistically in terms of the Series 1, 2, and 3, and we want to move some things around to make sure it makes sense and gives us the best value versus what we had originally said relative to the timelines associated with the bond application. So on that note, I'll turn it over to Leah Andrea from King Scott Architectural.
Thank you. Good evening. It's a pleasure being here. As Scott mentioned, it is a compressed timeline. As you can see, this is a plan that we gave when we originally started. And these are the 2016 projects. So just before Christmas, we got together, introduced our team, set district, listened to district expectations, and immediately after the holiday, we came in force to the school district and flooded every building, verifying existing conditions, gathering drawings and everything. So as you can see, it's basically a three-month process. The same amount of work next year is going to happen in approximately eight months. And so the only way we could do that is because we have such a terrific team, steering committee team, great decision-making. Rex and David are there all the time. If we ask for something, we get it immediately. And so the cooperation has been tremendous. Clark and King Scott are all on the same page. So it's been very, very productive. The challenges are, you have to make decisions very quickly, and we have to verify things in the field that may or may not be that way once they get out building them. But we're moving along. We're on schedule and very excited to show you where we're at. So I'll go through each one of the schools and touch base on furniture, furnishings, fixtures, and equipment. And Scott will touch on technology and Mark on budget. So starting with Harvest Elementary, the scope of work is the secure vestibule as it is in all the elementary schools and middle school right now. New chiller and some cooling coils, cooling of the media. There's this fire sprinkler system that keeps freezing up there on top of Mount Lenaway where you get all the winds. And so we're putting glycol in that system and repairing that so that hopefully we take care of that. They say all the lighting with LED lighting.
I want to touch base real quick on the glycol, so make sure the Board is aware. We're talking about the form of glycol, which is a version of antifreeze. And that is safe. It's a queso vegetable oil type consistency that allows it not to freeze, but it's non-toxic. For some reason, we had people inside the building when the sprinkler went off, which is again is also unlikely. So just be aware of that.
And it's on Lenaway, Mount Washington.
Yeah, just the second story.
Yeah, and we found out a way to isolate it. We will have occupancy controls for the lighting to help control your lighting on a new public address console. And so if you're familiar with the building, front door right here, I'm going to blow that up and show you one of the solutions for the security vestibule. Right now, currently, people come in, do the airlock vestibule, and then go into the office this way. By doing that, they can get into anywhere in the school without going into the office. So the solution was simply to lock these doors down, let them get in out of the weather. But they cannot get into the office until the receptionist sees them, talks to them, and determines their business. They can get into the office, and then they can be let into the school that way. That's pretty typical of a lot. We have a lockdown function. If a person does get into the office and they determine that they're an agitated parent or somebody, a custody battle or something like that, they can lock down this entire office with a push of a button. And that's fairly typical in terms of how we're doing most of the security vestibules. So it's a combination of secure vestibules. We're using security glazing and films on the glazing so that they can't be broken in areas like that. So we're using Jason Russell from Security Consultant that's been very, very helpful in terms of helping us understand threats like that. And feel free to question.
I know you touched on, but if you want to go back to that slide there. We touched on these windbreaks on the main entry.
Oh, yeah.
This is an example, though, where I think the initial design talked us in denting these doors. And the cost associated with in-denting those doors, it would have modified how we could handle a secure vestibule. One of the modifications that King Scott brought to the table is to say, well, let's do something outside on the exterior of the building. If our issue is preventing the wind, they're maybe less expensive still. You know, these would be glass windbreaks. You can see through them, but ultimately allow the wind to keep those doors from being so pressurized, make it an easier entry point, but also do it in a cost-effective way. So I think we talked about areas where we're trying to do what we said we were going to do, but also do it in a way that is as cost-effective and efficient as possible. That's.
Yeah, those doors are basically being destroyed by the wind catches them and breaks the hardware on it. So thanks for, I missed that one. In Heritage, again, secure vestibule. If you're familiar with the building, the two pods, they have, apparently have doors on magnetic hole-open devices here to lock out both of the pods. We are putting hardware on those to be able to lock those down from the office again from if there's a situation in the building. There is some corner cracking in some of the brick. We're going to selectively repair some of that because of control joints that we have to add into it. There are some challenges with some sinks and freezing pipes around the perimeter. Fix those. Again, lighting, LED lighting with new controls, fire alarm visual devices, and new emergency lighting at exits. Again, public address console, speakers. And then again, circling where the office is and the entrances. We're also replacing the existing shingle roof, which is at the end of its life, with a new metal roof. And so again, this one's fairly simple. Before, people could come in, enter the building through the airlock vestibule. They had a window where they could see, but they would come all the way over here. But they could go anywhere in the school. And so we simply again locked down the door. We added a new door with glass in it where there was a previous window, and thus forcing people into the office, permission to go out, and again, being able to lock down that office. Same concept on that one. And fairly simple, reusing furniture where we can in both school districts or both school buildings. Some of them will have to get some new movable furniture in the offices to make them work. Again, replacing this metal roof. This is the gutter and the trim that you can see in that fault there. If you can see it, you can see a little bit of the cracking there, the brick on the corners. So Brick Institute recommends pulling up a construction joint because brick expands when it gets warm and pushes out those corners. In the, this is an interesting situation where these sinks are fed from water pipes that come through the ceiling, but they come down through this unit ventilator. And as the cold air comes in from the outside, it freezes those pipes. So we're simply going to run that pipe down the side on the interior, cover it with a shower, and then bring it into the cabinet. And hopefully that takes care of the freezing problem around the perimeter. Sinks on there. Again, you can see the roof we'll be replacing. Woodland Meadows, very similar, secure vestibule, lockdown hardware at the cross corridor, doors, replacing the metal roof, new LED lighting and controls. And the same thing, fire alarm visual devices, adding some of those, emergency lighting at exits, and then new clocks, new clocks in this building with a public address console as well. And then looking at this secure vestibule, again, prior to, the way it currently runs is they come through the airlock vestibule. They're into the school now again. They come into the reception, and then they go back out to the school, or they bypass it. So again, very simply locking those doors down, putting a new door in where they can come through, put new furniture, and then being able to exit back into the school. Again, the ability to lock down, adding a secondary exit into the office through workrooms as well. So again, very, very similar on all the schools on how we solve that problem, and the unit replacing that with metal roof as well.
Please, real quick, in terms of the elementary, so those are our three elementary buildings. And as we talked about during the campaign, these buildings were ones that were built, you know, 19, you know, the late 90s and then ultimately into 2002. The design associated with those, and you've seen, is fairly simple in terms of that office proximity, and you'll see them Pleasant Ridge was around. The other component to these now is that each of them will have a door as another exit point. And both Heritage and Harvest are kind of behind the principal's office. Here, we're adding a back staff entry point, kind of back in that copy room. So staff potentially can come in and out and/or exit if there was an issue into the school without going through what are essentially these two main entry and egress portions that our students now, Heritage one is in, kind of through a secondary office. But ultimately, the idea is that there's a back exit to the facility now as well.
Principal has a second means of egress through a conference room and this, through that door. Adding a nurse's station so that they can keep track of, have a little bit more room in the office as they keep track of the health area as well. Minor improvements on that. So that will require some remodeling in all of the offices and carpeting and finishes on those as well.
Can I ask a quick question just about, it seems, so now there's going to be a lot more traffic funnel through the offices. What's that going to do for staffing as far as manpower?
Yeah, from two aspects. One, if you don't intend to add physical staff, it is going to require a different level of training in the, as you talked about, Jason Russell, that will provide us with support in terms of really identify, because there's a new kind of identification piece that the training needs to take place, and then how do you process the individuals through? In general, the volume should be similar to what the process is going to change in terms of, again, these are, the process for entering and exiting buildings will occur from the time the bell rings till the end of the school day. When the school is not in session, understand these buildings, as they are now, will be more open and accessible. So more of a processing issue. And it could take a longer period of time. We'll need to refine that as.
Are we moving that software system at Pleasant Ridge piloted to the other buildings? Or this is going to kind of replace that?
This replaces it. We may, there's going to be another conversation about what type of, we may move to a different security software system when it comes to even the card readers. In fact, we're evaluating that. We have a meeting coming up on Friday to talk. We're going to look at that kind of holistically, and we may have a new system, or likely at some point have a new system that incorporates that in addition to some staff components and potentially I need to be, student. We may see, you know, in the next several years, we have students that have badges for proximity readers there. It could be used, districts are starting to use that for attendance and other things. But it does allow you to verify who's in the building at various times.
We went through that system last Friday as well, and it's amazing the different things you can do with the card readers and who you allow access to, and how you can track it, and being able to control and report who's moving in and throughout your buildings. Very impressive system.
Lee, if you want, I'm going to have David Raft. He was heavily involved with that process. Do you want to talk about the site?
Sure. So as you know, drop-off and pickup, so it was a fun time for parents. This one is one of the larger problems, which, once we combine the two schools, we have the same timeframe. Because when we opened both schools, one was an hour difference, so the traffic was able to be balanced a little bit. But now, it's done the same travel. They all enter from the top, where the one-room schoolhouse is, which is over here. The one-room schoolhouse comes here, they exit out by Liberty way along the side here. What we tried to do is reduce the ins and outs. So they have one coming in, but they also, they travel around and they actually exit the same way they came in, which kind of will help support the north and the east side of town. People coming in. Down here, you can come in off Liberty, or that side here, and you can come in, go up, back out the same way. So that could probably hit a lot of the southwest side of the town. So we hopefully will reduce the congestion that's up on Woodland Drive and back off towards Maple Road. We also decided that it would be nice to have no crosswalks. So if you really look at this whole system, you can start dropping anybody off all the way along back here. You can drop off for both schools. So if you have kids that are in Woodland Meadows and Heritage, you can drop them off anywhere along the line here. I don't, we'll wait till they get to the big center crossing, then they can at least split off and go to either side. That helps from either side of the loops you're in, and the proximity is pretty.
I think, yeah, one of the things to understand that, I think people's initial perceptions will be that the east loop is a Woodland loop and the west loop is a Heritage. That's not the case. As you can see from that, it goes fine. A parent who has a student in two, both buildings will pull, decide which one they want to use, pull and drop, and students will go in either directions.
This big center spine kind of piece is really nice for both, for this side, at least when you come in, you can drop kids off. It's a pretty short distance between the two. Another area we wanted to touch was the whole drop-off, bus drop-off situation.
That center thing that divides the two loops, is that a sidewalk?
Yeah, that's a sidewalk.
Okay.
Sidewalk, on the white is sidewalks. So that kind of makes it nice for wherever, wherever you get stopped at, you can let them out. And we try to get all the students out on the right side of the road.
And it still will take some training for parents and staff. Kids will want to, you know, run across the road. You have to have some monitors to start with and train, but it's, it gives them the opportunity to, it's a good thing to get out of the passenger side onto a sidewalk.
And then as we look at our bus transportation, we actually take, we took the buses right out of the whole area. And as you come in, you can drop off in the back of Heritage, and then they'll do the drop-off and head over and drop over to Woodland Meadows inside here. And then these little back entrances now go right into the buildings. Now, a little bit, depending on how transportation works, if there could be, some of our Heritage kids could be exiting at the end of the day, walking across the sidewalk that they do now, a lot of them do it right now, into this door right out to here, depending on how the transportation sets it up for taking, you know, one moment. But we thought that that's not, that wouldn't be a big issue. That might happen, it might not. That's still part of the whole transportation piece that they were working on. What's nice is that this whole parking lot, if you're familiar with it, right now, this whole curb used to be just a big drop-off, people just always park, and now it's all parking. So really, there's no more anybody lining up to park outside to jump in, find a spot, get in. We do, and I don't have the number, Rex, we gained like 50-some spots total overall.
What's shown is about the same, 284, but with overflow parking for events, you're going to be able to add over 100 more in the bus parking lots during event times.
And we really looked down here at this spot down here. Now, this is an old baseball diamond that we will be taking over a little bit. Actually, Super T, Senate Gray, actually decided, he goes, we had it reversed, so the road came straight through. And instead of having any crosswalks, we just moved the parking lot up. And it's, and it also helps slow down a little bit of the traffic as they come through and out. But again, all our, if you look at this, all the parking along here, here, all through here, it's just accessibility to the sidewalk is the key. And really having no crosswalks. And from my experience in every building I've been at, crosswalks, I'm sure the principals can talk, they just, it disrupts the, first of all, you get your current concern about the safety of students running across the street, and also it just slows it up a little bit. The other piece is the policy, the policy procedure that we're going to have to put in place from an administrative side at these two buildings is how this whole, how this whole thing will flow, and it's going to take some work because no matter where you go, there's going to be people dropping off. It's going to be a little bit of a wait. I really think this cuts it in half on this side because you have two ways in and two ways out.
Yeah, and actually four ways into the site proper is going to disperse that. People are going to find the, sort of, it'll equalize itself.
Where's that divider now? Right now, this has been probably that, it's right here. See where that is right here? You can almost see it built in. So yes, we're shifting it that way, and this is where it walks across now, and then you kind of jig-jag to get into the building. But now they're pushing it, and it actually will tie off these sidewalks, the road you currently here on both sides. So they align.
Staff parking?
Staff parking is anywhere, I would think. They're going, I mean, they haven't set where their parking is, but I would imagine anybody that's on this side of the building will park probably here. If you're on this side, you'll probably park here or here. I mean, that's up to the building administrators to set their process, but it's not something that, there's not a lot of staff in either of these buildings, and you really count them up. Any questions?
The one thing we have talked about and would like to do as potential alternate is the Woodland Meadows exit that potentially would allow the buses to not have to recirculate back on the Woodland, but allow them to get through there. You want to explain that?
Yeah, we talked, well, actually, we had a, we did have a community forum. Not a lot of people showed up, but there was enough, and then Paul was there. And we had some really good designs and ideas. And actually, although we were all thinking this kind of a little bit, there's a couple people that came up with the same type, almost came up with the same exact looks when we broke them up into committees and they kind of did the thing. There was one that, a young fifth-grade young lady came up there, and she thought, well, it'd be nice to kind of let an exit going right along. There's a one-room schoolhouse is here, the gardens are here, and then the playground's here. But right out here, you could actually almost exit right into the bus garage or the bus cage. And I think, I'm not sure, it's one of the things we had put out as an alternative to see what the budget comes in, and we did. But it would kind of, if they wanted to at the end of their route, they could just kind of go right out and go right into the transportation lot.
To the extent that would pull that final bus traffic off of Woodland, to the extent that we manage our traffic on campus versus on Woodland, we feel it provides a safer environment for our parents and for commuters and other vehicle traffic on the road. So that's what we'd like to do.
Couple of these, if you guys are familiar, traveling this little route here, it's just a road that has no curbs. This would be curbed roads, and then, you know, it'll be, it'll be a nice surface. Because at one point, this travel right here was just a bus travel, one-way bus travel at one point, and it really hasn't.
Supposed to be one-way.
But yeah, but now at least it's two. I feel better when I go this.
Looking at Pleasant Ridge, there's a little bit of site work. We're going to throw some drainage in the north parking lot area. There's compression in the back of the building. We're going to fill in, prepare for a new playground element with surfacing and drainage in that for that. That's about the extent of the site work. Pleasant Ridge is, of course, much more extensive. As many of you may recall, the angled area, there's two entrances, and the office is actually internal to the building. So people actually have to come into the building, into the office, and the office doesn't have any visual access to who's coming in the buildings other than through camera access or something like that. So we looked at this whole area, and I'll show you an enlarged plan, but basically took art and Spanish classroom and converted that into a new office, did some remodeling in this area for special ed itinerants and teacher workrooms, moved the art room over here. And in addition to that, we're replacing and upgrading interior finishes, barrier-free door hardware, replacing exterior hollow metal doors and frames. Again, we're reconstructing some damaged brick corners. We're fixing some flashing, some linking at the columns at the media center there. And we're remodeling and expanding restrooms for barrier-free and around the cafeteria and. So if you look at this, again, now we're creating a secure vestibule here, where we're locking this off. This is the new reception area in the office. Again, they come into the secure vestibule. It can be buzzed into the office. There's actually a window here, too, for visual access. Principal's office is over here, conference room. So we've created a whole new workroom, healthroom, office area in this area of the building. So they have good visual access to who's coming in the building. They have a secure entrance. And then we're recreating some of the restrooms, expanding them again. entrance, and then we're recreating some of the restrooms, expanding them again for This becomes special education staff workrooms, itinerants, and some other conference areas. So art moves up here past the media center, so there's a new art room, which I think one of the original concepts had them on the internal space, which is really dreadful for an art teacher, they like that natural light. So it's a nice natural light up there for the art room, so, thought that worked out real well. Moving on, we're replacing some classroom countertops and sinks. These are currently some security needs that come down, we're putting real doors on magnetic hold opens, so that we can close those rings down during a situation, or if they just want to open up the central area of the building for nighttime use, they can close down the wings as well. And I think that's.
Is there any discussion about the fire alarm system in that building?
Yes, I believe.
It's not mentioned, it is on the.
Here's the whole rest of the, good segue. So basically, all new mechanical equipment in the building, new controls, direct digital controls, new chillers, kitchen return, or kitchen exhaust, rooftop units, there's some underfloor ducts filled with water, we're removing those, filling them in and replacing them with overhead ductwork, just taking care of a whole bunch of maintenance items and upgrading the whole heating, ventilating, air conditioning system. New lighting, LED lighting, again with controls, we're replacing the exterior light fixtures with LED, and this one's going to get an entire new fire alarm system. And new clocks in this building as well, again with the public address console and reusing some of the speakers. We may have to replace some of the speakers as they go through the school, but we're going to salvage what we can on those.
So related to Pleasant Ridge, this again, is the building that was built in 1990, largely untouched in Project 97, the work that did see in Project 2000 was the exterior work, the new parking lot areas, and the reconfiguration of the pickup and drop-off areas. So from an interior standpoint, this building really is, when it's twenty-six years old, when this all gets done, ultimately, we're really redoing it from the inside out, including really increasing all that office.
And the middle school, we're doing a secure vestibule there, new chiller, server room air conditioning, replacing auditorium and cafeteria, rooftop units, kitchen makeup area unit, upgrading the fire alarm system, new emergency generator for the emergency lighting and the coolers and freezers and pumps. We're replacing some select electrical panels as they're getting older, and new clocks and a P A console. And I'll show you below where the Starship Enterprise here, where the entrances out here in the office, I'll blow that up and explain what we're attempting to do. Originally, the concept from the bond was simply to, if you're familiar with the entrance, there's a, currently a vestibule, they walk up a ramp and enter into the office area, which is actually right here, but by doing that, they have access to the entire building. And so the idea originally was just using camera and voice, A I phone, checking out who's coming in and then letting them in the building into the office. Our designers came up with some fairly unique solution, where we're going to put corridor, cross corridor walls with double doors in them, they'll always be locked down, there'll be card access for teachers to be able to go communicate back and forth, which I understand does not, doesn't happen a lot, but that basically forces them into a locked vestibule and into the office, where they can be let into the building. So we thought that was a great solution. We do have to get a variance for that, but we've done that before in similar situations to have that long corridor in there. So again, following through with the same concept of securing them in a vestibule before you check them out and bring them into the office. And then Celine High School, there's two projects that we're working on for 2016, there's some damaged hard tile in this big commons area, you know, the big corridor in the commons cafeteria, there's some movement with control joints that we have to replace and fix. Just replacing some damaged floor transitions in the academic areas where it goes from a tile floor to a carpet floor, things, burst protection for chilled water, boiler shutdown switches, adding the coolers and freezers to the emergency generator, and a lot of maintenance things that will help. Providing new LED lighting, we're doing part of it this year with gym, auxiliary gym, wrestling, weight room, pool, and commons corridor. And then we're replacing the Melhale light parking lot light, that's with LED as well, great payback on those. And then we're replacing some damaged tile pool offices, there's a stainless steel door that's deteriorating with the environment, with the pool water there, we're replacing with a fiberglass reinforced plastic door, it's a fire-rated door, and then we're replacing stair flooring in three of the stair towers in the academic wing. And finally, we've been talking furniture, fixtures, and equipment, we arranged for Dr. Peter Breitaker to come in and hold a breakfast and learn. Dr. Breitaker has been studying kids in motion and the psychology of learning for over thirty years, and he's the foremost expert in that field. Basically, the concept is, is if kids are focused on sitting still and listening up front, they're not learning, because they can only do one thing at a time. And so the whole idea of how important movement is and how they design their furniture to make that happen, let kids fidget and move around, so that they can listen and learn and focus on the lesson at hand, and then accompany furniture that goes with that. So we've seen, there's a new product out called Cultural Shift, again lightweight, durable furnishings that allow collaboration, being able to reconfigure classrooms in any way, and again, very lightweight and durable, it's actually designed by a facilities person in Atlanta. So that was real exciting to get involved in that. And then Dana, our interior designer at Pleasant Ridge, with her two kids at Pleasant Ridge, had a booth on furnishings, and she allowed kids to come up and ask what kind of space they would like to learn in. And so she took her own pole with the students, and her daughter's right there. So she's the interior designer for the project, and her kids go to Pleasant Ridge. And so, you know, one liked the traditional area, because I think it has lots of space, it'd be less distracting. Somebody else liked another area, because they can see things better in this one, another one said it would look very comfortable. So different kids learn in different ways and have different ways of expressing that, so that was kind of fun for them to get involved in that. After that, I'll let, if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them, otherwise let.
I just have a quick question. In our past construction projects, I mean, in our original surveys, we're always replacing doors and that, because we apparently didn't buy the higher quality doors the first time. So are we buying things that have a longer shelf life this time?
Yeah, on the exterior doors, a lot of school districts have been going to aluminum, they call fiberglass reinforced plastic doors, and they're very extremely durable, of course, a little bit of rust, like the old hollow metal ones, you don't have to paint them, very, very durable door systems. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to pass around the slide and just touch on this from a technology standpoint before we even do the other budget portion. So from a technology standpoint, we are, we're participating in terms of the P A and bell systems that are part of the summer of 2016. We are participating in terms of from an access point, security standpoint, from the projects, but ultimately, and I'm not providing glasses to read this, but ultimately, this does kind of articulate the planning that's gone on. So really, we've tasked our technology department, that's really come up with, what is 2016 to 2019 look like? And with technology, maybe a little bit different than some of the construction projects we're looking at. We need to leverage additional resources and/or other resources. So for example, E-rate, we all pay that E-rate taxes on our landline or cell phone bill, that money's captured, and we can apply for that as a school district. And so in the past, there have been things we haven't applied for, because we didn't have the other capacity in terms of capital to be able to make the systems work. So now we're looking at that, we also, the state has some funding associated with grants, we're really looking at the technology portion of the bond in a holistic standpoint, and saying, okay, where are the other pots of money? What can do those pots do? And then ultimately, where does the bond fit in for that? And really, where does the bond fit in really between now and the end of 2019? So when we look at Series One, we're trying to stagger our approach there. So again, P A and bell system is part of the summer of 2016, and that's being done now. Access points, not necessarily from a security standpoint, from a wireless standpoint, we're going to be purchasing additional access points. High-speed fiber, and again, if you look at that, if you kind of, you can see the dollar figures associated with that. High-speed fiber access continues to be an issue. Again, our focus, if you look at this now, firewall's a filter, server's a storage, is not about the end devices, it's about creating such a robust network that speeds to the student device, speeds to the staff device, and reliability are really the key components to it. And you'll see how divestments vary based on the existing infrastructure there. Presentation stations, they're continuing to investigate what type of presentation station we want to have in each of the staff classrooms. Understand that we're really trying to figure out with technology, not necessarily putting in, hey, we're going to wire it into the wall and your presentation station's going to be here. We need to find devices that are flexible in terms of their use and adaptable in terms of their uses, so we're evaluating those right now. Part of this project would include replacement of staff devices over that three-year window of time, and so laptops for staff, et cetera, will be part of that. As well as copiers, it may not seem particularly high-tech, but our copiers are still important devices, frankly. We've been leasing those, we have an opportunity to kind of upgrade our copy reliability, as well as lower our costs in an ongoing basis, so it will be part of that. That's been something, because we haven't had a bond for a very long time, that we've been involved with, that we're going to be able to really think differently about moving forward, I hope. Although not necessarily newfangled, certainly copies continue to be a core part of what we do on a daily basis, and a lot of it now is C N A and document redistribution. So the numbers are in front of you there in that slide, but if you look at the five point three million dollars, we're looking at how we want to allocate that, how it's allocated per building, and then ultimately, where are those other funds coming from? I would think the technology would be something we probably want to have a standalone presentation to the board this fall about where we're moving with that, it's almost a more nuanced approach than some of the things we're talking about tonight. Any questions about?
I'll leave for figure five.
Yeah, we're going to have to fit it on eight and a half by eleven. Now, again, here's Mark Paulus from Clark Construction, and his role is the budget.
Thanks, Scott. Couple things we're going to talk about today, we're going to talk about what the budget is between the 2016 and 17 work of the Series One, and how it's changed from the original budget to the current budget. And when I say changed in regards to it, what we've looked at as we've had transfers that have occurred either from a furnishings budget that was in Series One, work that has, that we've looked at that was in Series Two and Three, that needs to be, that should be completed now to minimize costs later on for the district itself. So I'm going to go through some, not go through detail on each of the schools, but just give you a sort of an order of what we're looking at to be completed in this upcoming year. Then we're going to go through the details of the transfers, and then our first glance of the estimate of where we are in regards to the current budget itself. So just here's our 2016 budget for, because of the amount of schools, I'll have two slides for the 16 and the 17 year, where we've had some transfers back and forth, I'll say for all of the schools themselves. One thing to point out, Woodland Meadows and Heritage, it seems to be a drop in regards to the budget, and I guess the one thing, when you take a look, we have not eliminated, when you see a reduction in the budget, it is, scope has not been eliminated, it's been transferred to other, to potentially other contingency items. As we went through into each school, there was some built-in contingencies into the line items, and when you get to the next page here, which you'll see is a significant increase in the construction contingency. So you see some areas where we've transferred money from the buildings themselves in the contingency to cover that. And then again, what one of the changes are, we've created a new category for the, what David spoke about in regards to the site work itself, we've created a new category for Woodland Meadows and Heritage, that just transferred from the individual schools themselves. But our original budget for 2016, we were to complete twelve million, a little over twelve million dollars, and the budget right now for the 2016 year is fourteen million dollars. Again, going through, we have worked in all the buildings this year except Liberty, which will be done in 2017.
Does that current budget mean we're doing more things, or it costs more to do?
We're doing more things. And Paul, we're going to go, I get a couple, a set of slides of where we have transferred the money from on the furnishings in Series Two and Series Three. As an example, one of the two significant ones, and I'll steal the thunder early, is we're replacing the roofs at Heritage, we're showing, replacing the roofs at Heritage and Woodland Meadows now, that were originally scheduled to be replaced in the Series Three work.
But I understand, we're talking about doing fourteen million dollars worth of work in June, July, and August this year, so again, we'll be busy all summer long here.
And I guess on the overall standpoint as well, the original construction cost for the Series One, for Series One budget was twenty-seven point five million dollars. We've added about three, we've added in scope, or actually, you can't say added scope, but transferred scope from the other categories, additional three point four million dollars. So our overall construction cost has been with the transfers of thirty point nine million dollars. Again, 2017, all the work at Pleasant Ridge is to be done in the 16 year, that's why there's no work there. Some additional work was added, and we'll go through at Harvest, where there was going to be no work at that building, and you can see Woodland Meadows and Heritage had basically at the same budget. And then again, the same comment of the 2017 year, there was contingency work, dollars in each of the work scopes themselves, and that's why that has increased as well. As you can tell, we've gone to, you know, fifteen point one million up to almost sixteen, over sixteen and a half million dollars worth of work for the 2017 year. This is all the transfer work that we've had in, again, the three categories, and this is loose furnishings. This was work that was defined to be done in Series One, to be done by outside the construction cost. You have at Harvest, and you're doing the P A system as part of this, Pleasant Ridge, new clock and bell, Woodland Meadows, new master clock system, and then there was work that had already been completed by Rex's team over at Heritage. And the same thing is mentioned, that Scott mentioned at the beginning, of the technology-wise P A system's being replaced the majority of the school, and then the clock and bell This is work that, the budget transfers from Series Two bonds to complete additional work, and although the one on the bottom is probably a dollar amount, everybody would like to see five hundred dollars instead of up above at two hundred and seventy-five thousand. But this gives you an idea, and all these items will, again, allow the school, these schools to operate more efficiently earlier, that will save costs for the district on the general fund side. Again, more, this is now Series Three, this wouldn't have been the work in 2022. These items at Harvest are all the additional work on the H V A C system to make the building operate more efficiently, better comfort, creature comfort. One thing to point out, that was in Series Three, the one for sixty thousand dollars, by doing that, that allows, you know, reduction, again, another one of a reduction of consumption. One item at Pleasant One item at Pleasant Ridge, we've done a review that was originally, it was supposed to be in Series One, that at Pleasant Ridge, we've identified that the parking lot area has some more life to it, and so we've transferred work that was supposed to have been completed in Series One into Series Three right now. And again, the two big, the two added significant ones, which creates a better, you know, better comfort for the, a drier condition by replacing the roof. Currently, both Woodland Meadows and Heritage have shingle roofs. This is going to a metal roof that will give you a longer life. And Paul, you asked about that, a shingle light, you know, a metal roof will have a longer life than a shingle.
The cost of those are about how much more than the standard?
It's about, if I remember right, it's about two hundred and fifty thousand for each building. But you're going to be looking at the metal, the life of the metal will outlast the. This is the last part, as we have our current budget. We have gone through, King Scott and Lee's team has done a great job developing drawings in a quick side, in a real quick area, and we've been able to put estimates together. And this is off of our current budget that we have, and this is not broken down into the 16, 17 year. This is just the overall building itself. I know you see some negative numbers in Pleasant Ridge and Woodland Meadows and Heritage and the schools there, but as you get to the bottom line here on that, on the last page, we're currently showing, with our estimating to the current budget, we're about five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to the good. And most of that, again, is because of, the reduction in some of the budgets were because of the contingencies that were in the body itself. Any questions?
So you understand kind of where, in terms of, if you have a budget, and we have what we think we're going to pay. Obviously, we haven't gone out to bid yet, but we're back within the window, so we moved scope and whatnot, but in terms of moving that scope, we feel like we're going to be able to get that.
And to add on to your question, in addition, bidding-wise, we will be coming to, we're planning on coming to that bid for approval to the board, your first board meeting in April, and then your first board meeting in May as well. You'll probably see us in between because we'll come to the board with the priorities earlier, so you may, I may be a frequent visitor for the month of April and May.
So like the money that we saved on issuance of the bonds and that kind of stuff, that all rolled over into other parts?
The money we saved on the issuance of the bonds, we would save on the cost of the bond, shortening the bond term, you know, kind of, that, this interest savings goes back to the taxpayers essentially. Now, that being said, some of the other things we have, and you know, our costs associated with architecture and construction have come in below our budget, so there are some dollars, are some dollars there that can be allocated. So there, and again, these contingencies are funds that are not yet allocated. And so in theory, if we hit our budget numbers, we don't use our contingencies, there's an added dollar there. That being said, we've all done a construction project before, there's a reason they, we put contingencies in there because there are a lot of things that will be determined on time as well.
The lower issuance cost actually does increase our bottom line here. It's the, the lower interest rates that save on the taxpayer, yeah. So we do have a little bit more available for the issuance cost.
I had those, okay.
So I have another question. When the physical claws and those kinds of bits go out, are we requiring a guarantee from the bidders for ten years, twelve years, and still cracks, seeing models? Just curious.
There'll be a standard guarantee, there is, within construction, which I know may be unusual, there's a one-year guarantee on all the materials. There are some certain materials that will have extended warranties as well, but we will be, warranties that will be provided to the district will be the standard warranties of a standard construction industry.
All with asphalt, the best we do is, we bring in testing agencies. We make sure that the subsoil is tested and compacted properly, installed properly with proper thickness based on the number of frequency and the weights of the vehicles going over them. So it's designed typically for fifteen year life, fifteen to twenty year life on asphalt paving, and so we've got geotechnical surveys already, and engineers looking at those designs. But I don't think, I don't think I've ever heard of a warranty on paving, private insurance policies.
With that being said, we are looking at equipment that we want to somewhat spec for the preferred vendor, but it's equipment that multiple competitors can bid. So we'll get multiple bids on HVA equipment, but we want this product, but ten companies may bid on it. So we are using what we call name brand, but equipment that we're familiar with, that we feel is quality, from Schleg, access controls, you know, there's different, we are working on that, so. Make sure, we don't get the lowest bid possible.
Right, right. Because we want a business.
Ones that don't go out of business, we can't get replacement cars anymore.
Right, right.
Okay.
Do the roofs kind of have a longer warranty?
I believe the metal roof would be about thirty years, I believe a thirty year.
The finish is, finishes twenty, twenty years, twenty-five years. The roof itself is thirty.
Colin?
You know what? That's a good, that's a good point because right now, we're reusing the existing gutters and downspouts, rather than tear them off and put new ones back in, they're perfectly good conditions as well as the trim, kind of limits you to, it might be blue.
Oh, blue?
Yes, or blue.
And to ask a question, typically, like on a shingle roof, your best guarantee you're probably looking at, I believe, is probably fifteen years or so.
Best, yeah.
And you can buy more to basically extend the service policy then.
I know the roof at my house failed after twelve years, so I understand.
Yeah, there's different weights in terms of shingles. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mark kind of went through the costs of just the construction part. We also have the technology, FFNE, and buses, and so we need to make sure that our Series One costs have been the forty point five million. We actually received forty point six million in proceeds. So I kind of outlined the original budget for the application and then the projected budget for each of those areas. You can see at the bottom that we went from thirty-nine point nine million up to forty-two point four. We've only got forty point six. Once we get all the bids in, we'll see how much of that construction contingency is left, and we'll have to make some decisions on what we do. We could move some of the 2017 work into the second series. We could maybe change some of the scope. We might look at moving some of the costs into the sinking fund, you know, still do the work, but have the actual cost come out of sinking fund. But until we kind of get those bids, we don't really know how much we're talking about. I also wanted to point out that these are just kind of rough figures. It doesn't include the issuance costs, which are around two hundred and forty thousand. It doesn't include the consultant cost that we'll have for the safety and security, the FFNE and the technology, but we don't have room figures for that yet. But all total, you know, it's probably half a million dollars or less. But we'll get those built in as well. So that's Series One, and then we're also looking at the bond as a total, and Mark outlined the work that was moved from Series Two and Three. So you can see that for Series Two and Three, we would actually have more money available to expand the scope or, you know, as whatever we want to do at that point. But in total, we're pretty much right on target.
If we projected the, when we issued the Series Two and Three bonds, did we use, you know, like five percent interest for those?
Interest also is not built into this, and we won't really have an idea on that until we have a draw schedule set up, and then the FM will determine, you know, kind of a rough estimate of interest.
And we'll say on the Series Two and Three work, I understand, we did put a five percent increase and a ten percent increase, so we value the work itself as being more expensive by five percent, ten percent as the next series. So in theory, as we move work forward, it does get cheaper in terms of based on our projection. That being said, we also need to watch scope because we still only have what we issued. We don't have more money. We just have four years.
So we'll kind of be looking at that at probably all the board meetings, having a report on where we stand within Series One and the total.
Yeah, that'll be nice to put out on a web page to keep everyone up to date.
So the important, you know, bottom line here is looking at, you know, what the various terms of our bottom line, we're in a very tight window right now, which is good. That being said, we're talking projected budgets, and we're talking estimates, you know, the rubber hits the road later this spring when we get a bid.
My questions?
I don't have any questions.
I just want to comment that a lot of people have done a lot of work, and this is awesome. Thank you. Can't see you guys, but thank you for all your work back there.
They have, you know, not like the Clark, the King Scott, but I will say Rex and David and the other staff, you know, they often, when they say they're getting something, they're turning around and asking others within our organization for that, and they've done a great job of pulling that together quickly because we understand that our community wants to see this done, but also we need to make sure we're really looking at it, we're really diving in, because there's a lot of work that needs done quickly, in time we can't afford to make any mistakes.
Yeah, I think Woodland Meadows, Heritage, the final design is a real good one, so it looks good, and I think all the other, you know, from where we started to where we're at now, I think things are, you know, I think they're improvements that look like they're saving us money as well, so.
Well, a lot of the things, again, it's not real popular to talk about in terms of, but the HVAC, the LED lighting, and David and Rex, whenever something you see, kind of David always goes to the infrastructure, but ultimately, those are things that have a return on investment for us. We talked about our operational costs, and I think that's something we went to our community and said, if we do these things, we will be able to drive dollars back into the classroom in an ongoing fashion. So those are the type of important investments that we need to make as a district. I think we're making.
Great job, everyone.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of, oh, yeah, forget it. Skip one. Can I have a motion to authorize continued proposed design and acceptance of the current budget for the bond?
Salute.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven and zero. Can I have a motion to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda? Approval of the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen. B, approval of the special Board of Education meeting minutes of February eleventh, two thousand and sixteen. C, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of February twenty-third, two thousand and sixteen, in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and nineteen dollars and sixty-nine cents. D, receive and file the human resources report. E, approval of the following field trips as submitted by Superintendent Jim, the key club leadership conference, the debate for endsix tournament, national speech and debate competition, skills and leadership state competition in Grand Rapids. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven and zero. Items on the next agenda?
We are having a special education village presentation. We're going to be a presentation from the county here in a short while. We will be honoring the, our National American scholar, finalist, honor finalist, and commendance scholars. And let's be honest, it's pretty much a precursor to the big meeting of March, that will be March twenty-second at Harvest Elementary, but he's.
We're ready to be, or will be.
Hurry up and get through this March eighth meeting so we can get to the twenty-seventh.
We will have a budget report. And we have, and probably a couple other things that will happen between hours.
The next meeting of the Board of Education will be held on March eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at six thirty PM here at the Liberty School Media Center. Can I have a motion to adjourn the board study session of Tuesday, February twenty-third, at seven thirty-five PM?
Salute.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven and zero. Thank you, everyone.